Get started tonight, I'd like to welcome Reverend Monsignor Peter J. Rau from Saint Peter Catholic Church in Roswell to lead us in our invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council members. It's been twenty-eight years since I was up this way and I started my priesthood in this territory here, so it's wonderful to be back here and to be with you today. And so, as we gather, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the great gifts that you give to us. We thank you for this spirit of wisdom and understanding, the spirit now of fraternity. Help us now in decision-making as we move forward, guide us in all that we do, and above all, grant us now the grace of charity. We make this prayer of thanksgiving through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Okay, I want to welcome everybody here tonight, and I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, July fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, to order. Will the city clerk please call Rau and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'll be happy to call Rau for the July fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk's staff prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call Rau this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurmond.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koots.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Luss.
Yeah.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt is traveling in excuse, as is Councilmember Joe Longoria, also traveling. Councilmember Lance Large.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, it's to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic over which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, just want to welcome everybody here. We appreciate you being here, and I'll ask the city clerk to call the first item.
Our first item is approval of meeting agenda. This is agenda item number thirteen, one-six-five.
Okay, do I have any, anything on the agenda, or the staff doesn't have anything?
We need to add an executive session for litigation and land acquisition.
Okay, we'll request to add an executive session for litigation and land acquisition. Anything else on the council guide? If not, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda with the addition of the executive session for land acquisition and litigation.
Second motion. Okay, got a motion by councilmember Thurmond, a second by councilmember Luss. All of them in support, please raise their right hand. Say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, next item's public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council, and to provide input and opinion on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing or during today's public hearing. There is no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes for remarks. Do we have any general public comments?
No general comments, sir.
If we can move on to the consent agenda, if you wouldn't mind sounding the items.
First item is approval of the July first, two thousand thirteen, regular city council meeting minutes, agenda item number thirteen, one-six-six. Next, approval of the July eighth, two thousand thirteen, work session council meeting minutes, agenda item number thirteen, one-six-seven. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and the Environmental Quality Company for a Milton household paint and chemicals collections event on August third, two thousand thirteen, agenda item number thirteen, one-six-eight. Our final consent item this evening is approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Kettleson and Associates, Inc., for Birmingham Road at Hopewell Road, roundabout peer review, agenda item number thirteen, one-six-nine.
Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve the consent agenda from councilmember Luss, a second by councilmember Large. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to our reports and presentations. The city clerk would please call first item.
We have a proclamation this evening recognizing George Ragsdale. This is being presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, I'm honored to present this proclamation to someone that has done a lot for the city of Milton and just as much before the city of Milton was actually started. So, again, tonight, I'm proud to recognize George Ragsdale. And whereas George Ragsdale has been a valued resident of Milton, Georgia, and lived in this area for seventeen years, and whereas he is a graduate of Cornell University with a degree in law, and whereas Mr. Ragsdale served on this community as a member of the Fulton County's Rural Preservation Steering Committee, focused Fulton two thousand five Comprehensive Plan Committee, and Blue Ribbon Commission, and whereas he led the charge for Milton's Incorporated, serving as chairman of Fulton County's Commissioner Lynn Riley's Milton Advisory Committee, and whereas, once Milton Incorporated in December two thousand six, Mr. Ragsdale served as chairman of both the Planning Commission and Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee, and served vital roles on the Crab Apple Form-Based Code Steering Committee, Highway Nine Form-Based Code Steering Committee, Highway Nine LCI Study Committee, and Milton Charter Review Commission with dedication, integrity, leadership, commitment, and distinction. And whereas, Mr. Ragsdale's pending retirement plans have recently been accelerated, causing him to move from Milton, and whereas his leadership, dedication, and commitment will be missed in Milton, and whereas, Mr. Ragsdale has been a driving force in the formation of the city of Milton and a major contributor to its growth and its recognition as having the best quality of life in Georgia. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the city of Milton, hereby recognize George Ragsdale for his time and commitment to the city of Milton and thank him for his hard work, and it's given under our hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on the fifteenth day of July, two thousand thirteen. So if I could ask the council and George to step forward. Thank you, George.
Thank you. Thank you, Ron.
All right, if we can move on to our first presentation, if the city clerk will please read the item.
First item is consideration of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia, to establish the ad valorem tax rate of the city of Milton for fiscal year two thousand thirteen and for other purposes. Agenda item number thirteen, one-seven-zero.
Excuse me, is there a motion and a second?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the first reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by councilmember Thurmond, a second by councilmember Koots. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, passes unanimous. Tonight, we have no items under a public hearing, so we'll move on to our zoning agenda. The city clerk will please read the zoning rules and sound that item.
At the second regularly scheduled meeting of the month, the mayor and city council consider zoning agenda. These items include rezoning, petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances, in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and text amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules this evening and procedures for the meeting. The applicant and all those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of ten minutes to present the petition. The applicant may choose to save some of the time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains within the allotted time. The city clerk will be keeping track of time and will inform you periodically of the remaining time for your presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable before beginning their presentation. The Planning Commission has heard the rezoning agenda items, and recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for their consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should be submitted to the Community Development Department to be included in the normal distribution of packages to the council. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregating two hundred and fifty dollars or more to a local government official of the local government, which will consider this application, it shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the governing authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed two hundred and fifty dollars or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our zoning item this evening is consideration of RZ thirteen, fourteen, one-three-one-seven-five Hopewell Road, Duke Land Group, LLC, to rezone from AG1 Agricultural to R3 Residential to develop eleven single-family lots on nine point zero four acres. This is agenda item number thirteen, one-six-zero. First presentation was heard at the July first, two thousand thirteen, regular council meeting. Ms. Kathy Field.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Having technical difficulty here. Okay, you see the parcel outlined in red. Subject site contains nine point oh four acres, zoned AG1. It's developed currently with one existing house to be demolished. The applicant proposes to rezone to R3 Single Family Residential with eleven lots at one point two-two units per acre. The site is located within the agricultural, estate residential, and equestrian designation of the city of Milton two thousand thirty Comprehensive Plan Map. Applicant is also requesting connection to sanitary sewer for the site. Access is derived from the existing Newtown Road, not from Hopewell Road. This site shows the existing zoning, zoned AG1. This shows the future land use plan map, is showing the site as proposed for agricultural, estate equestrian, estate residential, and equestrian. This is the site plan that was submitted April second, and I want to bring your attention to this site plan as opposed to the next one, which was submitted at a later date, to show the difference to you and to point out an issue that has been alleviated. If you look at the entrance off of Hopewell, and Hopewell runs across the top of this plan, you'll see a thin parcel, the first parcel that you come to, and that is a parcel that's been designated for a detention pond. Next to that, you see a house lot that borders along Hopewell. Policy of the city council is that any homes along Hopewell must be a minimum of one acre in size. This house lot does not meet that minimum requirement. However, the revised site plan of June seventeenth shows a common area that goes from the lot designated for the detention plan, and then includes now a strip that parallels Hopewell Road. And that was at the suggestion of the Design Review Board that there be put in place a permanent buffer, and so that's what has been created. But by doing that, extending that common area along the whole frontage, the requirement that a house lot, that there's no more a house lot bordering Hopewell Road that would mandate a one acre minimum size, that requirement goes away because of that extended common area that now follows the entire area. Okay? So, you'll hear reference to it as we go along, and I just wanted to explain that to you. This picture shows the entrance via Newtown Drive, which also accesses Milton Place. This is interparcial access looking north from that drive into the site. Subject site looking north on Hopewell Road. In terms of background, the Planning Commission voted five to one to defer this item at their May twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, meeting to allow further discussions between the staff and the applicant regarding conditions of zoning regarding transportation conditions. Since the last meeting, the applicant's representatives met with the Public Works Director to discuss city right-of-way minimum width and cul-de-sac requirements for the proposed extension of Newtown Drive. The applicant has submitted a revised site plan dated June seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, which reflect the agreed-upon changes. In addition, the locations of the proposed stormwater facilities have been discussed with the Public Works Director, and final location will be determined after further engineering is completed and prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit. The applicant has indicated a common area along Hopewell Road to allow for preservation of trees as recommended by the Design Review Board, and that's that narrow buffer area that was created. The existing lot and common area, detention area along Hopewell Road comprise a total of point eight-five acres. Staff reflects that past policy mandates for one acre lots along Hopewell Road, although the applicant has created a common area along Hopewell Road that will negate this condition. Planning Commission voted five to zero on June twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen, to recommend approval conditional to rezone from AG1 to R3 Residential for eleven lots, and their conditions are essentially the recommended conditions that you see at the end of your staff report. Based on the applicant's revised site plan submitted, the Community Development Department on June seventeenth, two thousand thirteen, staff offers the following considerations. A comparison of the development standards for the R3 Single Family Dwelling District are shown here. The required development standards are on the left column, and in the right column is the proposed development, and you can see that the proposed development does meet the development standards of the R3 zoning district. Terms of landscape strips and buffers, staff notes the twenty-foot landscape strip and fencing are required around all detention ponds. The site plan does not indicate the required landscape strip and fencing. The fencing shall be a six-foot-high, five-board equestrian-style fence with two-inch-by-four-inch welded wire constructed around it. There are two stormwater facilities located on the property, one adjacent to Hopewell Road and one on the eastern portion of the site. Other site plan considerations, pursuant to section sixty-four dash twenty-three ninety-two, the zoning ordinance requires sidewalks, which shall be constructed in accordance with the Department of Public Works standard plan, which requires sidewalks on at least one side of the street. The site plan does not indicate the required sidewalks, but a condition is included to provide a sidewalk on at least one side of the street. The applicant has submitted a letter requesting that public sanitary sewer be served to the subject site. It is attached at the end of the staff report for your review. The subject site is not included in the intergovernmental agreement between Fulton County and the city of Milton to provide sewer service within certain properties of the city of Milton. Staff notes that without the service of public sewer to the site, the requested minimum eighteen thousand square foot lots cannot be developed, but minimum one acre lots served by individual septic systems can be developed. Environmental site analysis, the environmental site analysis ESA report is sufficient and satisfies the requirement of section sixty-four dash twenty-one twenty-six. A field survey of the site was conducted by staff to verify areas addressed in the ESA report. The proposed site does not contain wetlands, historical sites, or sensitive plant and animal species. The applicant has stated the following in regard to the site. There is a stream flowing through the eastern portion of the property that has been located, and the city buffers have been incorporated into the proposed site plan. Wetlands located on the site are located within the banks of the stream and will be protected by the buffers. The property contains a slope exceeding twenty-five percent of the stream. If constructed, the subdivision would have to gain approval of a three-phase erosion control plan and best management practices to mitigate any damage to the steep slope. Arborist comments, there are two specimen trees located in the site, of which one is shown to be removed. The one that will be removed is a specimen poplar tree, and it will require for replacement fifty-four four-inch trees. This tree is a multi-trunk and in good condition. If the tree was a single trunk, staff would request a reconfiguration of the lot to preserve it, but given the position on the site and the fact that it is multi-trunk, removal and recompense is acceptable. Terms of the Fulton County Board of Education, there would be a negative impact on the Codburn Woods Elementary School, as well as the Hopewell Middle School, however, there would be no impact on the Cambridge High School. In regard to the financial modeling results, over a twenty-year period, it has been determined that revenue would exceed cost of services by forty-five thousand three hundred seventy-five Public involvement, on April twenty-fourth, two thousand thirteen, the applicant was present at the community zoning information meeting held at Milton City Hall. There was no one in attendance for the subject site. The requirements of the public participation plan and report were met. There was a Design Review Board meeting held on May seventh, two thousand thirteen. The comments that generated from that meeting included the fact that they would like to preserve the trees along Hopewell Road or replant the trees if needed. Standards of review. First question is whether or not the proposal will permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent and nearby properties. The proposed eleven-lot single family, I'm going to actually move to this one here and speak, I'm going to refer to the numbers on this plan, I think that would be easier to do. The proposed eleven-single-family residential subdivision developed at a density of one point two-two units per acre is consistent with the adjacent development to the south. And if you look at number five, that's Milton Place, that's zoned R3, and it was approved at a density of one point six-seven units per acre. If you look at number, the area labeled number four, that is Coventry, within the city of Alpharetta, zoned R5 Residential, at a density of two point nine-two units per acre. The area labeled number three to the east, that is Hopewell Plantation within the city of Alpharetta in Milton, that's zoned AG1. And then to the areas of number one and number eight, which are to the north and to the west, these are scattered single-family residences zoned AG1 that require a minimum of one acre lots. It is staff's opinion that although the proposed use and density is suitable with adjacent properties to the south and southeast, it is not suitable for properties to the north, northeast, and east. Two, whether or not the proposal will adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property. It is staff's opinion that the proposal may adversely affect existing use or usability of the adjacent properties to the north, as described above, since the proposal is not one unit per acre or less. To the question of whether the property to be affected by the proposal has a reasonable economic use, is currently zoned, the subject site may have a reasonable use currently zoned AG1 Agricultural. Four, whether the proposal will result in a use which will or could cause an excessive or burdensome use of existing streets, transportation facilities, utilities, or schools. Staff does not anticipate a significant impact on public services or utilities. The estimated number of new students for the proposed rezoning will have an impact on Codburn Woods Elementary School and the Hopewell Middle School. There is an existing curb cut on Hopewell Road via Newtown Drive that currently serves the Milton Place subdivision. The additional eleven lots will require the applicant to construct a left-turn lane on Hopewell Road into the Newtown Drive. It is staff's opinion that the proposal will not cause a burden on transportation facilities if approved with the recommended conditions. Five, whether the proposal is in conformity with the policy's intent of the land use plan. It stated the two thousand thirty City of Milton Comprehensive Plan calls for this area to be agricultural equestrian and estate residential. Terms of proposed use density, single-family residential at one point two-two units per acre is inconsistent with the plan. The plan map recommends agricultural equestrian, estate residential for the subject site and the properties to the north and west, but medium-density residential to the southwest, south, and further north. The proposed R3 single-family residential development is inconsistent with the two thousand thirty Comprehensive Land Use Map, Plan Map. Six, whether there are other existing or changed conditions affecting the use and development of the property which give supporting grounds for either approval or disapproval of the proposal. Although the proposed development is consistent with the adjacent development Milton Place, it is inconsistent with the plan map recommendation of agricultural equestrian and estate residential, which requires a minimum one acre lots. Based on these facts, it is grounds to recommend denial of RZ thirteen dash fourteen. Seven, whether the zoning proposal will permit a use which can be considered environmentally adverse to the natural resources, environment, and citizens of the city of Milton. The proposed use will not be environmentally adverse to the natural resources, environment, and citizens of the city due to the required development regulations as it pertains to stormwater facilities and tree recompense and landscape requirements. Conclusion, the proposed eleven-lot single-family subdivision is inconsistent with the city of Milton's two thousand thirty Comprehensive Land Use Plan Map for agricultural equestrian and estate residential. Therefore, staff recommends denial of RZ thirteen dash fourteen to rezone from AG1 Agricultural to R3 Single Family Residential. A set of recommended conditions are included if the mayor and city council choose to approve this petition, and these recommended conditions are: One, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the subject property as follows: single-family detached dwellings and accessory uses and structures. B, no more than eleven total dwelling units at a maximum density of one point two-two units per acre, whichever is less, based on the total acreage zoned. Approved lot slash unit totals are not guaranteed. The developer is responsible through site engineering at the time of the application for a land disturbance permit to demonstrate that all lots slash units within the approved development meet or exceed all the development standards of the city of Milton. The total lot-unit yield of the subject property shall be determined by this final engineering. Two, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following: A, to the revised site plan received by the Community Development Department on June seventeenth, two thousand thirteen. Said site plan is conceptual only and must meet or exceed the requirements of the zoning ordinance, all other applicable city ordinances, and these conditions prior to the approval of a land disturbance permit, unless otherwise noted herein. Compliance with all conditions shall be in place prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. B, all areas which are not part of an individual lot and held in B, all areas which are not part of an individual lot and held in common shall be maintained by a mandatory homeowner's association, whose proposed documents of incorporation shall be submitted to the Director of Community Development for review and approval prior to the recording of the first final plat. Three, to the owner's agreement to the following site development considerations: A, minimum one-acre lot developed for single-family residences along Hopewell Road. Note, applicant has created a common area along Hopewell Road that will negate this condition. B, minimum heated floor area per unit, 2,500 square feet. Four, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following requirements, dedication and improvements: A, extend a five-foot concrete sidewalk that currently exists along the frontage of Milton Place subdivision along the entire frontage of the proposed development and provide for necessary drainage improvements. B, provide a southbound, left-turn lane on Hopewell Road at Newtown Drive in accordance with Chapter 48, street sidewalks, and other public places of the City of Milton Code of Ordinances. C, maintain a 50-foot right-of-way throughout the subdivision. D, provide five-foot sidewalk with two-foot beauty strip on at least one side of internal streets. E, dedicate at no cost to the city at least 10.5 feet of right-of-way from the back of curb of all budding road improvements along the entire property frontage, as well as allow the necessary construction easements while right-of-way is being improved. F, proposed right-of-ways shall be located no closer than one foot behind the back of sidewalk. Five, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following: A, prior to the application for a land disturbance permit, the developer engineer shall submit to the Department of Community Development a stormwater concept plan. The plan shall comply with the requirements of the Stormwater Division of Chapter 20 Environment of the City of Milton Code of Ordinances. B, to the stormwater management facilities—I'm sorry—the stormwater management facilities shall utilize earthen embankments where possible. Wall structures are not encouraged. If wall structures are proposed, they must meet the acceptable design standards of the City of Milton, Department of Community Development, and Department of Public Works. I, where side slopes of storm—where side slopes for stormwater management facility are steeper than four-to-one, the facility shall have a six-foot-high, five-board equestrian style fence with two-inch-by-four-inch welded wire constructed around it or equivalent, as may be approved by the City of Milton Public Works Department. C, prior to issuance of a land disturbance permit, an amended intergovernmental agreement for extraterritorial provision of sewer service by Fulton County to certain property located within the City of Milton indicating sewer service to this parcel described as 13-174 Hopewell Road, parcel ID 22495010370209, must be approved by the Milton City Council and the Fulton County Board of Commissioners. Mr. Mayor, that is my presentation, and I'm open for any questions.
Okay. So, before we move forward, does anybody have any questions for Kathy at this point? Will we open up the hearing for presentation? Bill?
Kathy, Milton Place, when was that approved? Was that approved after we were incorporated or prior to?
That's a Robin question.
It was prior. It was owned in Fulton County and started in Fulton County.
Okay, somebody else? Open up our hearing and first ask for those speaking in support of this application.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Scott Reese with Romolo Reese and Associates, doing business at 13685 Highway 9, Milton, Georgia 3004. I'm here tonight representing Duke Land Group in their application to rezone the property located at 13175 Hopewell Road from AG1 to R3. We're proposing 11 lots on 9.04 acres. We've met with the public works and engineering departments. I think we've addressed all their concerns pending finalization, which would occur at I guess the only real major concerns that I see with going forward with the application, the CLUP, the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, designates this property as AG or equestrian You know, we typically try not to go against the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. We feel like this is a little bit of a special case in that it is an island. You have properties or subdivisions on all sides that are less than one acre in development or virtually the same designation that we're asking for. You have Milton Place to the south, City of Alpharetta with small lots to the east, Hopewell Close, and Brookshade to the north and northwest, and Vicarie Crest to the west. They're all similar zonings to what we're proposing in here. We feel that the property, due to its size and topography, is not viable for agricultural use. Steep topography and small acreage is not really viable for unagricultural use. So, we feel like that residential is the best use for the property, and the R3 zoning allows for development in keeping with the developed neighborhoods in the immediate There is sewer through the property and adjacent to the property. I understand the sewer map is—you know, that we've all, you know, gone through that many times, but I'm thinking—we have submitted to Fulton County. We have approval as far as routing and treatment capacity, so I don't think there's any problem there. The one-acre—you know, we're not fronting Hopewell Road. I know it's not in the ordinance, but it was Fulton County process and city that any lot fronting Hopewell Road—and, you know, we understood that in keeping with other lots that fronted with driveways or that. So, we've tried to design a buffer between and also have a house that's neither fronting nor backing up to Hopewell Road. It would be a side, but it would be protected by the permanent landscape strip. Everything else, I think, is pretty well—I mean, it would be—there will be a sidewalk on both sides of the interior street. We've met with Carter as far as designing detention. We're going to try everything we can to go with earthen embankments. We're probably going to be trying to move the detention pond from the existing against the stream to the lot due west of it, but as in all those matters, we're not going to finalize anything until we have firm engineering on that process. So, I guess I'm going to hold back any time for in response to questions and rebuttal. Thank you.
Is there any other comment in support of this?
We do, Mr. John Duncan. And for the record, Mr. Duncan has completed and executed an affidavit to represent Milton Place HOA.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. City Council, John Duncan, 2357 Milton Place. I represent the Milton Place HOA who are in support of this community. Thank you.
And that's all we have, sir, for support.
Okay. And I'll open up for any of those who would like to speak in opposition.
We do not have any in opposition, sir.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Basically, open back up to council for any questions, both either the staff or the applicant. Karen?
I've got a question for the applicant. You made a comment that there was sewer adjacent to and running through this parcel.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have any kind of map that actually shows that there was already sewer on this parcel? Because I know that you understand that sewer is a hot topic in the community.
Well, we have the as-built that we obtained from—
It's in your report. What page is it in here?
It's towards the—
It should be after the actual staff report.
Eighty-eight.
Okay, so this is the one that Duncan—
Yes. The sewer going through the property was placed—well, I don't want to age myself—but whenever Brookshade and Hopewell Close, so late eighties, early nineties. And the manhole adjacent to on the south, that was placed with the construction of Milton Place. And that is the tie-in point that the Fulton County Water and Sewer Department is requiring us to use, which is much better for us from an environmental standpoint. We would really not like to go into that 30 percent slope area. But it has been—sewer has been on this property for at least 15 years.
Karen, can I ask you a question on sewer? As Karen said, that's, you know, been a hot topic and an important issue to a lot of folks. The mandatory connection or criteria, I know it's either the county or the state, if there is sewer available, then you're supposed to be able to hook up versus septic. Do you have any comments on that, just to clarify that?
Two thoughts, Mr. Mayor. It's a good question. Legally, unless the IGA, which Fulton County has to have in place to be able to provide sewer, which is basically a governmental function within the corporate boundaries of Milton, if we have not authorized it pursuant to an IGA, it's not available. So, even though there may be a manhole or line that crosses the property, unless we've given permission, it's not technically available because we've not given permission. However, this may be a situation where everything makes sense for that permission to be granted by way of a very slight modification to the IGA, so that shouldn't be a concern. But from the standpoint of the—I think those are mainly DHR regulations. I think that that's not going to be dispositive.
But the intent of the DHR regulations is to connect to sewer where available.
That's the public policy preference of the state of Georgia. Yes, ma'am.
So, the state of Georgia's preference would be to connect since it is available there on the property.
No question.
It's just a technicality in the fact that you've got one jurisdiction providing the water and sewer and another jurisdiction actually located within the city limits of another jurisdiction.
That's right. I think that makes perfect sense.
Kate Lance?
On the same lines, I mean, we're talking about a horse and a cart here. I mean, is this something that we ought—that the IGA—
The only thing I'd— Would follow if this were approved.
Okay.
Or it would be—it would be brought back to us at another time.
Right. The only thing you would want to make clear the applicant understood, you know, particularly like looking at staff's recommended conditions, is that we wouldn't necessarily be agreeing to do the IGA by way of the zoning. They're just—they would be two separate legislative acts, that's all. But as far as the order, there's no—there's no requirement of any particular order.
Second question for the applicant. Your eastern boundary line, is that the city boundary?
It is the City of Alpharetta, City of Milton property line. Yes, sir.
So, everything to the east of this is the City of Alpharetta?
Yes.
Yes, Scott, the tough question. You know, obviously, in order to fit into the agricultural zoning, would nine, one-acre lots even be feasible on this piece of property, or is there—
Well, I mean, the—from a development—or developer standpoint, it's always more is The—in this particular case, with the stream and with the constraints of topography, it works much better with the ability to use 18,000-square-foot lots in the flatter areas and large lots in the other areas. That being said, you know, of course sewer versus septic always rears its head, but this property without sewer makes it very difficult because of the topography concerns as far as trying to get—you know, the initial system is typically not the problem. It's trying to fit in a reserve system, and that's a—you know, a state mandate that you have a backup system. And with five-bedroom houses, which are kind of the norm, this particular piece of property is under contract to a local builder, and, you know, we sat down with him, and he's proposing roughly 4,200-square-foot, five- and six-bedroom homes on this property and trying to work that in. And then also the setbacks, everything—it just works better with this—with the R3 zone. And we're also—you know, it is a fact that if you're next to a neighborhood that's R3, you know, same-sized lots, it just—it flows better. So, I know I went around the bush, but trying to answer your question.
Well, in a nutshell, my question is, you know, it's one thing if we're talking, say, 10 lots versus 11. You know, if—you know, that's not a big deal, but kind of asking if—if it did not have this zoning of R3, but it was state AG1, one-acre minimum lots with setbacks or streets and all that, you know, are we talking maybe five or six lots versus—
Yeah, we're talking more like four or five lots.
So, we're talking half the number of lots that—
Yeah, it's—it's—it will not work. It's not just a function of acres and lots.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to clarify. Bill?
Scott, I'm looking here at this matrix that Kathy presented here with the surrounding parcels.
Yes.
And you mentioned Brookshade had a similar zoning. I see here on this—on this matrix where it's R2A with 0.98 units per acre.
It—it's kind of a Franken subdivision, as we term it in Vicarie Crest. It has portions that topography is such that is no sewer. So, you've got—the yield ends up being considerably different. But there are lots on the Hopewell roadside that I think are 20,000 square feet in size. Those are sewed, and as you go into the rear, then you have one-acre-plus lots that were not sewer serviceable due to gravity flow. You know, Fulton County in their infinite wisdom says there will be no pump stations or lifting. If it doesn't flow via gravity, then it's a non-sewered lot. So, I mean, it is—it's—it's like Vicarie Crest where you have a mix. You have—in the Vicarie Crest case, we have 15,000-square-foot lots, and then one-acre and two-acre lots on the non-sewered parcels. The Brookshade, I think they're 20,000 square feet, and then one and two-acre lots in the back. So, that—I tried to say similar as opposed to exact, but it is—there are less than one-acre lots in Brookshade.
Well, wouldn't you see the same situation with this parcel that we're talking about, then? That it could have different size lots.
Well—
Now, I believe you said at the cul-de-sac, they are—
Yes. And at LDP, we foresee that—I'd step over—but the lots around the cul-de-sac, we're now showing the common area lot. We are 90 percent sure that we will be able to convert that to a house lot. It will probably be 1.2 acres in size just due to the topography. And substitute—and I don't have the lot number, but it would be the western—next western lot on the north, put it as the stormwater management lot and drop it down and do away with the wall. But until we have done a full hydrology, you know, we always put the storm drain facility at the low point until we have a full hydrology study. But those— But those lots in the back will be, but we are also trying to preserve as much common area. Because we all know once someone owns the lot, then they have the ability to, you know, cut trees, do whatever. If we preserve that area to the, to the east as common area around that stream, there are mature hardwoods in there and we just like to see it left the way it is. But there will probably be two one acre lots and probably a three-quarter acre lot around cul-de-sac. So it would be a mix of eighteen thousand and one acre lots.
You had said also that this parcel in question here is somewhat of an island amongst these other eight or nine parcels in this matrix. I guess you could look at it conversely, that these other parcels here are islands amongst AG1 area.
And it's just all of the developed parcels. When I say developed, I mean a community. Hopewell Close, Brookshade, Vicry Crest, Milton Place. Now, the undeveloped, even though they are house lots, you know, those parcels are the AG, are one acre plus. And then of course Kasu's property across the road. But that's just a, a large parcel that just has not came on the market yet.
I believe when the comprehensive land use plan was developed, obviously this remained as AG1 here. And I'm not sure, maybe our expert in the audience here to talk about that, but I'm not sure the adjoining Alpharetta properties had anything to do with how the land use plan was developed in Milton. I think the overall concept was to keep as much AG1 property along that corridor as we could in spite of the fact that Fulton County had approved some of these other developments prior to our incorporation.
And we were sensitive to that, and I wish he was here. But at the planning commission meetings, the representative purported himself to be the homeowners association president for a Hopewell plantation, was, spoke in favor of the, of this application. He was very, well, the entire neighborhood, according to him, was very pro this particular development. You know, I wish he was here tonight. But I'm sure you guys have access to the minutes of that meeting. But he, he was purportedly the president of homeowners association and he was in favor of the development.
Well, the expert that I was referring to was Mr. Raigstah. Could probably address that point.
Yes. You know, I'm sure there's always a thought process. I just feel like in this particular case where you have developed neighborhoods on the periphery that are this particular zoning or very similar to this zoning, that it's, it's not like we're in an outer area where there is nothing of this lot kind. I don't feel like we're burning, blazing a new trail with this, per se. But that's my opinion. Karen?
I know we tried to keep one acre lots adjacent to Hopewell Road. And I know the common area is not technically a lot, but to me it is a lot still. It's just a common area lot, not a residential lot. And personally, I believe as such that that needs to be one acre in order to, to be consistent with what our board policy has been in the past. I think that would be adding a point one six acres to that common area. Give it a little bit more buffer. Is that correct? Because it's point eight four right now, is that correct?
Yes. You know, and I absolutely understand the, the topography on the east is so steep that we try to stay as much away from that environmentally sensitive area. If you will look at some of the lots that are configured up Hopewell Road, if you saw a gerrymandered zoning or voting district, some of those lots appear to be that. Just trying to be as straightforward, you know, not pull any crazy configuration of a lot to get to one acre or anything like that. We're trying to do, you know, the most straightforward design. Leave the buffer strip along Hopewell Road to preserve the, the look and the feel of Hopewell Road. And as far as trying to leave the most environmentally sensitive area on the east, this is where we are. I mean, at LDP, there may be a way to create or squeeze. Just looking for what I thought was the best compromise.
I'm just worried about the precedent it sets for us not having that be the one acre one.
Yes, and I understand it is a technicality and technically we're not, I know it doesn't look, but, you know, everything, it's always in the minutia and the details, so.
Yeah, and on that, on that point, you mentioned earlier that you might have that lot on the east, make that a house, that would be over the one point two acres.
Yes.
Move the retention pond or the stormwater drainage further to the west. You know, what if you moved it all the way to the west, the last lot on the west, and then you started your first house with the second lot on the left? I think that's what Karen was talking about as far as making it over. If you look at the map over there, that far lot on the left could be your storm. I don't know if that's something possible.
No, that's, well, that's not possible due to your topography. I mean, the water must run downhill and we've got to, we've got to treat it at the end, not at the start.
So you can't go that far west?
No, no, this is, you know, we can conceivably move it one and, you know, we're talking about a very small amount of impervious area with one lot. But when we start talking four or five lots and the street itself that's all running downhill, that's a non-starter. So, you know, I understand, you know, we, and I knew when I was creating the strip that, you know, that I was kind of, you know, skirting issues, but, you know, some obviously rule, we just want to push the edge, so. But we, I mean, we, it was design review board and we were trying to come up with a way. And we knew that if we put that in the lot, then the owner has the ability to change that. I mean, he, he could cut the trees conceivably once it's his. So we thought, well, let's pull it out, it's common area. Then it will be protected, you know, for infinity and beyond. Lance?
That strip, how wide is that strip?
It's twenty feet.
Twenty feet?
Yes, on an eighty foot right of way. So it's, it's a little, you know, Hopewell, most of our streets are, you know, fifty and sixty. Hopewell has an eighty existing. It was an old farm to market road. So, and conceivably at LDP, we do the hydrology. The detention pond hopefully will shrink the area that we've got and we could enlarge that a little bit, but, you know, until-
Enlarge the strip?
Yes.
Which would enlarge the parcel size and?
Well, either way, I mean, it's, we're hoping that there will be a little bit of extra land. But, you know, you try on your front end when you're designing, always leave more area for the detention pond. The last thing you want to do is to, Mr. Developer, you're going to get way less lots because I squeezed the detention pond area way down.
Yeah, I understand that one.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be the only thing. And then the only other thing that, kind of, I guess, talking with Kathy as well, as far as the AG1 property to the north. Right now, I don't see any condition for a undisturbed buffer or anything as far as this development is concerned to have along that northern property line. That would, as far as buffering the more, I guess, intense zoning from the less intense zoning.
If it's residential, if it's residential, there isn't a buffer requirement. It's when you're that residential and commercial.
Right, right, right. But the only thing, as I understand it, there was some concern about the impact, even though it's residential, to residential. I mean, they have enough depth there and I see what their building envelopes are. They still have enough rear yard, they could still have a undisturbed buffer.
And that's certainly a-
Along that property line, this is a, this is a wooded parcel, right?
Yes.
I mean, that would be to maintain as much of the existing trees that are along, say, within that twenty foot, say twenty foot strip.
Along the edge.
Along the edge. Would, to me, would go a long way to help mitigate, you know, potential impact on the adjacent properties. Now, the other properties I would see, they look like small strip properties. There'd have to be some sort of assemblies or something really for any type of development on those properties of any type other than just building on the existing lots there. So that would be my only, you know, concern.
An additional condition, which would be a twenty foot undisturbed buffer.
Yeah, something like that, I think would be a good thing in terms of, since you do have, even though it's residential, against residential, you have a much less intensive residential versus a more intensive residential. And the staff's report was the impact it had on some of the surrounding properties, although the properties to the east are our good friends Alpharetta. But, you know, that's the properties to the east.
Right, and they-
The less intense is to the north, everything to the south. And of course, the west is the road. So, you know, to have that, to me, might be a good, you know, condition.
The only thing that I would ask is that it be on the buildable lots. Because the detention pond lot, whichever one it becomes, will have a standard city twenty foot planted strip. Is that, is that correct, Karen? So it will be incorporated already in that, so.
I think, to me, I think that having the backdrop of those mature trees too, to your homes would really help with your home values as well.
Okay.
I just want to say, have you spoken with the people adjacent, the one property owner?
Yeah, well, yes, we sent, and we have, we have sent letters, we have done phone calls and we have met. We have found no one, this is a rarity.
So they don't have a problem with this?
They don't have a problem with any development, I mean, this site plan per se. You know, when we showed them and told them this is what we're proposing, there were no, we have, and this is a rarity for me because we are in the world's biggest not in my backyard area ever. And this, this is a first for me in twenty years of any sense, so. But I have found no one in opposition.
Okay, anybody else have any?
No.
No?
Could you clarify what you were talking about?
As far as the buffer?
Yeah, twenty foot undisturbed buffer.
Yeah, undisturbed buffer along that northern property line.
Adjacent, right where the one three, one five, five is.
Basically where they're, they have a, what, it's a thirty foot, a thirty-five foot rear building setback?
So it'd be twenty within that envelope?
Right, within that, it would be the setback area.
Yes, well, within the setback, but not the entire thirty-five, but a twenty.
Right, I just want to say twenty feet of that thirty-five foot. But as you can see with the, outside of their setbacks, even with the, they're showing their building envelopes. I mean, you still have a fairly good sized yard, even, and you still have twenty feet. And the twenty feet still wooded, it could be under story and so it's still part of the yard.
If sewer goes through, there'd be no concern whatsoever. If it's septic, then you always have the reserve system. There's one thing, in the sewer inter-agency agreement, I think it said one three, one seven, four. We are one three, one seven, five. So I don't know if, okay, thank you.
All right, I'll either, any more discussion or questions for our staff? If not, open up for a motion on this application. Matt?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consideration of RZ one three, one four, agenda item number one three dash one six zero with the recommended staff changes along with the recommended twenty foot undisturbed buffer by council member Large.
Second?
Did I say that right?
Yeah, along the northern property line.
Along the northern property line.
Robin, do you want to clarify?
You say a rebuildable lot, so he doesn't have to do it.
Correct, rebuildable lots.
Okay, got it. We need to clarify that motion.
If you could just restate it one more time and withdraw your second.
I withdraw my second.
And then Matt just restate your motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consideration of RZ one three dash one four, agenda item number thirteen, one six zero, with the recommended staff changes, conditions, and the twenty foot undisturbed buffer along the buildable lots on the north end.
Okay.
Second?
Yes, sir. So we have a motion for approval by council member Coons with staff recommendations as well as the addition of a twenty foot undisturbed buffer along the north property line on the buildable lots only. And a second by council member Large. Is there any discussion?
I would just like to ask if the applicant, if they'd be willing to try to make that into a one acre lot adjacent to Hopewell Road, if they're able to at the time.
Any extra property that is obtained in LDP, we will more than gladly place in that lot.
Well, regarding, I mean, for discussion, I think it's a great transitional property with what you're trying to do. Obviously, the comprehensive land use plan is something where we really need to go on most of the time. But in this particular case, I think it makes sense to, to look at this more uniquely as such. You know, the planning commission passed it through. You know, I think that's a good thing. So I'm just glad that you guys are being in benefit. I do hope that you would look at council member Thurman's request on that Hopewell Road. But that's why I made the motion.
All right, if I ever please say, Bill?
Well, I'd like to reinforce what Karen brought up too. I think that's important along Hopewell Road. And rather than going on the possibility that there's going to be any additional land as a result of doing your stormwater management system, I think that's kind of vague. Somehow I'd like to see reworking that entryway, even if it means eliminating that lot number one or adjusting houses down that, that south road. I think we're packing a lot into that site, particularly because of the twenty-three degree slopes on the east end of it. I think you're going to have problems with it. It's pretty steep.
At this point, right now, we've got a motion and a second on the table. Obviously, we could ask staff to, you know, when this does come into LDP, you know, for the record, to work with the applicant to try to make sure that happens again, you know, without any, right now, the motion of second is stated, so that could certainly be a concern and we can, you know, address that. Or if this motion fails to pass, we could discuss it more and come up with another motion. Am I correct, Ken? He's talking during class. I just, we've got a motion and a second on the table and waiting on a vote. And then council member Lust pointed to take that lot and increase it to one acre minimum on the front, or the buffer area. You know, again, as the engineer applicant said, you know, once they do all their final engineering and all that, there's possibility they'll have more land, they can do that. My point is, I guess, we have the option of telling our staff that we would like them to work together to try to make that happen. But in order to have that as a requirement of this motion, it would have to be. So I said, basically, we need to vote on this motion. And if this vote, motion fails, then they could, you know, could all be brought up as a, as another motion adding that in there. Is that correct?
That's right, that's right. Or it could be, you know, there could be, you got a motion to second, you could have a motion to amend as well.
Again, I'll leave it up. I know until, until you get all the engineering done, it's hard to say. But, you know, it's also a condition you can put on there where they have to work. to say, but, you know, it's also a condition you can put on there where they have to work, work with it.
So is that, is that one of the conditions?
So are you making a motion to amend it, to add that condition?
I think we'd have to.
You need to.
We'd have to make a motion to rescind the last motion and second, and then do another one if councilwoman said it.
No, you could, you could make a motion to amend the pending motion on the floor.
Okay.
And then you would need to take a separate action on that amendment, if it passes or fails, then it'll revert back to the main motion.
Okay.
Now to phrase that amendment.
Maybe I can make it a little bit quicker. Who made the original motion? I'm sorry, I was done here. So, are you likely to accept an amendment that would be similar to what Bill might propose to you?
I mean, yeah.
Because the cleanest way to do it would be just to remove your motion and start over.
My only concern on that is, is it structurally possible? You know, and that's the question, are we making a motion to force something that can't be done?
And I gotta tell you, work with is a hard thing to do, you know, because we can work with all day long, we can work with it until it doesn't work anymore, and then we really don't have the teeth of anything to do much more than work with.
So I think, I think we need to verify that, if we're going to do that, I'll rescind it, but that's what we need to find out.
Well, that's my only concern, is it may, you know, it, it, once they go, it may make this, this whole application, kind of an avoid from what we're voting on, it may have to be totally redone, so.
That's totally up to you. If you want to withdraw your motion, and withdraw the second, and start over with different stuff, that's fine, if you want to take a vote on the motion that exists now, that's, that's good as well.
And then we can make a motion to amend after what we pass?
If it passes, it is.
We can, we can make a motion to amend beforehand.
It's fine, and then if it doesn't, we can do that, or we can amend, you can withdraw it, and we can amend it. Again, that's my concern, by putting those conditions, it may be a total different site plan that comes up, to, you know, may not be what.
Well, if you've got eighteen thousand square foot lots, though, and you're only at one point two-two density, you ought to have a little bit of leeway in there.
Test engineer on that.
I mean, I'm not an engineer on that, so, but I'll tell you what, I'll rescind the motion, and then. The maker of the second would need to agree.
Okay.
Okay, so now, as we stand, we have no motion on the floor, we have no motion on the floor, and we're prepared to.
We're prepared.
Take a new one if one is kind of.
Again, I'd like to ask the applicant, then, would, would adding this condition on there make this possible, that this site plan may come back totally different?
I can, I see loss of a lot. I mean, that, you know, we're, you know, we, we tried, if, you know, the, the area up at the front, due to the cross drain under Hopewell Road, has to be some sort of stormwater facility. The Milton ordinance is, the stormwater facility is not part of a lot, it has to be a separate lot. So, we, you know, we created that, we separated off the parcel where we're not fronting on Hopewell Road, even though it's not an ordinance, or the ordinance does not say that any lot fronting Hopewell Road has to be an acre, that was Fulton County practice, and it was inherited by City of Milton. We tried to work, you know, we, in that, so, but we created the, the buffer area along Hopewell Road to preserve the, you know, the landscaping and the look, and that was our intent, and, you know, we, you know, and I know it's financially is not, you know, understand, if it doesn't work for a developer, he's got to go on down the road, that's not the city's interest, but, you know, it is real world, and nine lots works a lot better than eight lots, but.
Good point. You know, this one acre along Hopewell Road, I mean, is that usually considered a buildable lot? I mean, because what they're creating there is less than an acre, it's not an actual lot that's going to have a house on it. So if you had an acre with, you know, a forty, four thousand, five thousand square foot home on it, you know, you'd have less open space than you would, because you're only shy of, what, about eleven hundredths of an acre or something?
Sixteen.
Sixteen hundredths. Sixteen hundredths of an acre.
But the common area is not part of the lot.
I understand that. So, so really, if you look at the common area, even though it's not part of the lot, in that first lot, it's way more than an acre with a house sitting on it. So visually, it, it appears to be more than an acre that's going to front that Hopewell Road anyway. But, and my point on the requirement, or of Fulton County, was I would think that would be, any buildable lot or a house lot, fronting Hopewell Road, would have to be an acre or more. Well, here, we're, we're dealing with a lot that's less, but it's not a lot, it's common area, it's common area.
It's a parcel of land.
Right, and the way anybody looking at it's going to look at it like, well, that's, you know, no one any better would be, well, that's part of that first lot.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to keep that preserved just the way it is.
But clearly, if, if you, if you look at it, it looks like that parcel is carved out to avoid the one acre minimum on that one lot, because if you, if you didn't carve that out, you, the lot would not be an acre, so you would not be in compliance with our current policy. I mean, if you look at it, it just looks suspicious.
And I fully understand that, but it was, it was at the behest of the design review board that we create that permanent, I understand.
It just seems like to me, for point one-six acre, you could find a way to work it without losing a whole lot. I mean, that, it's just not moving it that much, and it would just, it would keep us from having a precedent set that we may not want, so.
Why can't you shift everything east?
The, well, the slopes we were talking about, but I'm, I guess I'm somewhat, are you, you're saying that you want one acre total in the common area plus the lot?
No, no, if you had one acre of the common area, because that's what would be adjacent to Hopewell Road, then I think that it would be okay, so it would just be the, you know, adding a point one-six to that common area.
Yeah. Well, and if you look at Hopewell close, there is a parcel of land that fronts Hopewell Road on the number two, that is a stormwater management area that is considerably less than one acre on the schematics. So the precedence is for lots, buildable lots, to be one acre. That was always the Fulton County, and it was an unwritten rule, it was just, you know, and it was, when we were doing lots, and it was typical, or subdivisions, it was, if we were going to front houses on Hopewell Road with driveways, they wanted one acre lots on that, even if we were doing something else. Or if we were backing a house up, they did not want the back of a house or the front of the house on a small lot being very close to the road, because the typical subdub houses that had existed on Hopewell Road were typically a hundred feet back or so from the road, and that works with a, with a subdivision lot. But the stormwater management facilities, if you look on that schematic of number two, have always been less than an acre, whether they front or not.
Well, Tuesday, Bill, I'll kind of leave it up to you, you're kind of pushing this, you know, we can go back and approve, prove it as is, the way we had the first motion, or if you want to make a motion different, you're certainly welcome to, and again, we can, you know, one passes or one doesn't, we can ask for another one.
I just want to, just so I get clarification on this as well, obviously, what we're talking about is if the house has one acre, we want that one acre with a house to front Hopewell Road, that's what we're saying.
Right, that's what we're, what we're trying to do. Reality is, is that we have a piece of property in front that has no house on it.
Yeah, but the reason why it has no house on it is because you've actually carved out that little thing so that it makes sure you don't have a house on Hopewell Road.
But even then, if you put on that, and then the other house on top of that, then how much do we have on an acre's basis?
It's not even close to an acre. If you, if you, if you cut that off at that corner, and had that little twenty-foot parcel there be part of the other lot, that lot would not be a one acre lot, that's why it's done that way.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'd like to see him reduce, come off the nine, nine parcels, and make the adjustments up front there, where it would be more compatible with what we've been trying to approve down through this corridor. The fact that there's existing idiosyncrasies and these other developments really didn't happen under our watch, they were, they happened before we're incorporated, so I think it's important that we try to at least comply with the comprehensive land use plan to the fullest extent that we can, and if, if it means losing a lot up front like that to be compatible with what we're trying to achieve down through, I think that's what I'd like to see happen.
Maybe, maybe there's some help from staff, too, though, what are we trying to comply with? Obviously, we're not complying with the comprehensive land use plan, the one acre, and Karen, I know you've been all robbing, you know, do you know what the one acre, you know, is it a set in stone, is it like Mr. Reese said, just a practice?
It's a, it's, it's been historically a board policy by Fulton County, but for you to also remember, and it's not on, I don't believe it's on this grid, but when the piece of a vaan came through for Beazer Homes, you all approved one acre lot along Hopewell, so that was the most recent policy of you all, just FYI.
Was that a one acre building lot, or a one acre buffer tip?
I would have to look, I think it was a one acre lot along, they ended up doing like a park-like, so there was no houses, it's almost like a mini park that abuts Hopewell Road, so there's no houses adjacent to Hopewell, and it's not twenty foot, it's probably forty, fifty, sixty feet wide, if not more.
It's a common area.
A common area for the front.
As far as trying to get this thing off center, I mean, it's, the motion, not me making the motion, I could, but just to make the motion basically the same as what we had on the table prior, that you can put the condition that the common area up front be one acre minimum, and then let them engineer it, and see if they can squeeze out that extra sixteen hundredths and still get your eleven lots, God bless you, you know, and if you can't, you can't, but that way, satisfied, but don't say, you know, I don't want, you know, I want ten lots, or eight lots, or whatever, to say, we're okay with that layout, with the exception that we want that front common area to be an acre.
You got to come, come up with the area somehow.
Right, right, and, you know, again, you're dealing with some cul-de-sac lots, you're dealing with a stormwater parcel back there that possibly might have some flexibility in it, so to find that sixteen hundredths of an acre, you know, I've been tasked with those types of things before myself, so, in Virginia, of course.
Yes, see, you're the one that rescinded your second, if you had rescinded, we'd just moved on.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to open it back up for a motion again.
All right, I'll, I'll do this again.
Okay, we'll let Matt do it.
I started it, so I'll finish it. I make a motion that we approve the consideration of RZ one-three dash one-four, agenda item number one-three dash one-six-zero, with the recommended staff changes, twenty foot undisturbed buffer along the north end for the buildable lots, as well as a one acre minimum on the far west buffer area, what do you call that?
Common area.
Common area.
Parallel with the Hopewell Road.
Adjacent to Hopewell.
Adjacent to Hopewell Road.
I'll second that.
And before you go any further, yeah, because of that point eight-four acres that exist, only point two-nine-seven of it at this point is listed as common area, the other is listed as a residential lot at point four-two, so if you're going to put that lot together, it's not common area that you're putting together, you're lumping together.
I think you got to label it as the lot plus the common area.
Correct, because it's, it's not going to be common area as in, you know, on, it's going to have a house on, so.
Right.
There's no common area there. Right now, if you add the common area plus the parcel that has lot number eleven, you end up at point eight-three-nine acres, which I think we've talked about, so that one-six, you, you got to come up with, you're adding it to a residential lot.
So I would say that is the common area plus.
I would say that you would cite it as lot eleven plus the common area, that land area equals at least one acre.
Lot eleven plus the common area along Hopewell Road equals at least one acre.
I'll second that.
Okay, do we need to clarify that, staff? Is that fairly clear?
Make sure the clerk understands, the second is with.
I can restate it if we need to.
I think we've got it.
You guys got it. Okay, so we have a motion by councilmember Coons, for approval with those conditions, and councilmember Thurman second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The passion unanimous. All right, we can move on to unfinished business, if the clerk will call the next honor.
An ordinance to amend chapter fifty-four, telecommunications sections, fifty-four dash three, fifty-four dash five A, fifty-four dash six F, fifty-four seven A one, and fifty-four seven A two, to include the definition of modifications, to revise maximum telecommunications tower heights, and to provide for an expedited variance process. This is agenda item number thirteen-one-six-two. First presentation was heard at the July first, two thousand thirteen, regular council meeting, discussed at the work session on July eighth, two thousand thirteen. Do have one public comment on this item, hold that after Mr. Gerard speaks.
Actually, what's our, you, you will like, take the public comment, and then speak up.
Absolutely.
And that would be Ms. Ellen Smith.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members, I'm Ellen Smith, Holt May, Zach Coffin, Wasserman one hundred, Galleria Parkway, Suite eighteen hundred, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three nine, and I have the pleasure this evening of representing AT&amp;T and any number of other wireless carriers and tower owners in my role as the Georgia Wireless Association Regulatory Co-Chair, it's a mouthful, but I just wanted to express to you all that my thanks on behalf of the industry for your consideration of this ordinance, this has been the process of months-long work, and I think is the result of frankly practical considerations and a real business situation that achieves both your goals of ensuring that you don't have a proliferation of towers and steel in the air, as Chris would say, but that the industry is able to serve its customers and your residents, and I just wanted to say I appreciate it. There are a number of folks here with me tonight, if you have any technical questions, we would be happy to answer them, but thank you very much.
Okay, is there any questions? Well, I'm sorry, we got to get to our presentation first, so.
That was a better presentation than I'll probably make. Mayor and council, this has been presented to you multiple times before, I'll give a quick, a quick, brief overview, just for the purpose of the people that are here, and for any of the council members that maybe weren't here during the work session. This seeks to modify our telecommunications ordinance by making a couple of changes, and it only makes a couple of changes, everything else stays intact, this is not a part and parcel throw out of the ordinance and put a new one in, this is to consider two options that didn't exist prior as co-location options, or those that we would incentivize. The important thing about this modification of the ordinance is it requires that there be proven that by allowing one of these co-location options to exist, that we would thereby eliminate an additional tower request in Milton, so we're not just all of a sudden saying tomorrow, let's go up and let's just extend up to thirty percent the height of all these towers, there would have to be a real demonstration that that act would in fact keep a second tower from being applied for. Two things that could happen, and would be incentivized by this co-location change of the ordinance, one is to allow for a tower extension up to thirty feet, and thirty feet from our height requirement today, our height limit today is a hundred and fifty feet, the magic of the thirty percent is that it would get us to a hundred and ninety-five feet, and that is generally five feet less than that height, which is required to be lit by the FAA, and that's important, we don't ever want an extension to trigger a lighting requirement, because that's all of a sudden, one tower is now seen at night versus just seen during the day. The other thing that it would incentivize is the replacement of an existing tower, meaning the footprint that exists today that already has a tower structure on it, we could work with an applicant to replace that tower with either newer technology, better technology, better stealth technology, to meet the needs, and if there's, the thought process is, if there's already a tower in the sky, a different tower in its place that's of newer technology, potentially better stealth design, would seem to make more sense than having an additional tower. sense than having an additional tower in the view of the, of different places in Milton. So, again, this doesn't throw out anything that we've become accustomed to enjoying as a very well-done ordinance. It just incentivizes in these practical situations where we feel as though we can be a little bit better and, and limit the number of towers that we have in Milton. It allows us to incentivize that and to put a little practical solution to an otherwise cumbersome regulatory process. That's what this seeks to do. Tonight, you approve this, and that's what the act would be if you, if you voted for this tonight, is that it actually would be approved, and we would move forward. I'd look for your support. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions on this? No, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve agenda item number 13-162 and ordinance to amend chapter 54 telecommunications section 54-3, 54-5A, 54-6F, 54-7A1, and 54-7A2 to include the definition of modifications to revise maximum telecommunication tower heights and to provide for an expedited variance process.
Second.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Thurmond, a second from Councilmember Coontz. Is there any discussion? In hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Detective City Clerk, please sound the final unfinished business item.
Consideration of an ordinance to amend chapter 10 buildings and building regulations to provide for enforcement of certain applicable codes relative to the safe use of real property in accordance with Georgia law to repeal any conflicting provisions and for other purposes. Agenda item number 13161. First presentation was heard at the July 1st, 2013 regular council meeting and was discussed at the work session on July 8th, 2013. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. This is a proposed modification to Milton City Code, chapter 10 pertaining to buildings and building regulations. We discussed this in some detail at the work session. This modification is being done to ensure that the city code more closely matches OCGA 366111, which authorizes municipalities to first of all identify structures and buildings that are not compliant with local codes or in fact may be unfit for human habitation. It designates your chief building inspector as the primary contact with the community for purposes of inspections and identification of such structures. And in the event that they are so identified, it sets forth a process by which the entity or individual property owner is placed on notice of the problem. And then, of course, it sets in place a series of activities that can culminate, and in fact, the initiation of litigation involving the city court of Milton and potentially finding that a building or structure is unfit for habitation, and the exercise of either remediation by the property owner or, in the absence of any satisfactory remediation, the actual ability of the local government to implement self-help to include the raising of the offending structure. Obviously, that is not where the city wants to be ever. On the other hand, we do owe a duty not only to our constituents but adjacent property owners to ensure that structures and buildings are kept in a, in a compliant status with respect to city codes and in fact to ensure that they are fit for human habitation. We want to make sure before we commence any action involving a structure being unfit for human habitation, that we are complying with state law to the fullest extent possible. Mr. Mayor, I think this has been the subject of more than a little bit of discussion. I think we all know the need and necessity for this in Milton, and I do recommend approval this evening. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. Any questions, Bill, from Ken?
So this would, this ordinance would cover any current citations that have been issued? Is that correct?
We believe it will cover any processes that have been started at this point. Yes, sir.
Okay. In your definitions, if I can get to it. Repair. And it's in section 3K. Pardon me. Means altering or improving a dwelling, building, structure, or property so as to bring the structure or property into compliance with the applicable codes in the jurisdiction where the property is located, and the cleaning or removal of tall grass, weeds, debris, trash, and other materials present and accumulated which create a health or safety hazard in or about any dwelling, building, structure, or property. I guess the point that I'm questioning is the phrase "which create a health or safety hazard." Now, if we're dealing with a hypothetical case here where there's been different types of materials brought into a property, inert materials, sand, crushed stone, maybe mulch, would those particular materials create a healthy or safety hazard?
It's a fair question. The, the answer is, is it would, it would depend. Many times what you have are instances where the actual materials themselves may not constitute on their face, for instance, inert materials like we're talking about necessarily a health or human habitation or sanitation issue. However, when allowed to accumulate, they can in fact result in the attraction of certain sorts of things like vectors and even rodents and things of that nature, where they, they can occur to such a degree that even though standing alone, perhaps not, in certain situations, they can. But with respect to this ordinance particularly, also if just the, the mere accumulation of those materials is otherwise in violation of our codes, we would have the right to take action whether or not they independently constitute a, a health or human safety hazard.
Would you, would you say that an accumulation of materials like this would constitute an illegal landfill?
Absolutely.
Would, would that be covered in this ordinance then, or is it covered in some other ordinance that we have on the books?
It's covered in other ordinances that we have on the books, but could be, but could be enforced vis a vis this modification. Because I think what you would have in certain situations is basically the maintenance of an inert debris landfill on property that is not zoned nor permitted for that. Yes, sir.
I'm gonna leave that one.
Okay. Anybody else? Not, open this one up for a motion.
Mayor, I'll move to approve an ordinance to amend chapter 10 buildings and building regulations to provide for enforcement of certain applicable codes relative to the safe use of real property in accordance with Georgia law to repeal any conflicting provisions and for other purposes. Agenda item number 13-161.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Large. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We can move on to new business. If a city clerk, please call that item.
Approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. for the FY13 road reconstruction and resurfacing projects. Agenda item number 13171. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, we're asking for your consideration for our annual paving contract. This particular contract includes the reconstruction of three roads, resurfacing of five, what I'll refer to as arterial or collector roads, non-subdivision roads, and 13 subdivision roads. In accordance with our normal bidding practices, we bid this particular project. We received six bids. A low bid was Baldwin Paving in the amount of $2,794,323.98. A little bit over budget. We have modified the bid. We modified Densmore Road, where we were gonna reconstruct the entire Densmore Road. We'll go from Freemanville down to North Valley this year and extend or continue the road in the next paving cycle to get us back into our budget allotment of 2.5 million. So tonight, we're asking you for consideration of a paving, our annual paving contract in the amount of 2.5 million with Baldwin Paving Company. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Karen?
My only question is, are we seeing the price of this going up now to the point that we need to try to use some of the funds we might have in reserve to go ahead and get a little bit more paving done?
We saw some slight increases. I think we got a little bit aggressive in the number and amount of paving that we wanted to do this year. Some numbers go up, it fluctuates, particularly the asphalt numbers fluctuate. So, you know, I think like everything else over the years, it will continue to increase. The full depth reconstruction projects are ones that are very expensive for us to do. We're getting down towards the end of those roads that currently need full-depth reconstruction, and next year, we'll be moving towards more of a overall pavement management program, so we'll see a little bit more bang for our buck. But, just like anything else, prices do rise. I don't know that we saw significant increases from last year, but, but asphalt does tend to rise.
I'd like just to clarify that in the future, maybe if we could ever ban that kind of question to a department head in the room, would you like to increase your budget?
Well, I, it just, since we do have funds in reserve, to me, if price, we're seeing prices increase drastically, then it might be time to take money out of reserve to go ahead and, it might be the best use of our taxpayers' money to go ahead and get a little bit more done of Carter's projects.
We could pave as much as he'd like to pave.
Mm-hmm. And I'd address that. I think the point's well taken, and, you know, keep that in mind. Like, Carter, you know, if you were to see something that, you know, and as we all know, especially if you're in that industry, that prices, you know, fluctuate and whatnot, but just because they may fluctuate a little, it doesn't mean you wanna jump on and do twice as much, because it may not make sense, fiscal sense, but staff should keep that in mind if they see something trending that we can go ahead and do this now and lock it in, and it will ultimately save money.
Right.
But we obviously don't wanna do work before we absolutely have to either, you know, or those timelines.
And I look forward to getting to a management stage rather than a constant rebuild stage.
So do I.
We're doing better than, we're before.
Somebody better call it a different weather pattern, or we'll never get these roads paved this summer.
No. Quickly, how, percentage-wise, how far along are we with the reconstruction process?
I would say that next year, we probably won't reconstruct any. We'll be in a paving and preservation mode next year.
That's pretty good.
It would be nice.
Future years, we might have one or two, but I think we're finally getting away from the majority of the projects going towards the reconstruction.
Okay. All right. If there's nothing else, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll move to approve a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. for the fiscal year 13, road reconstruction and resurfacing projects. Agenda item number 13-171.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion for approval by Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Coontz. Hearing no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Carter, while you're still at the microphone, ask you to call, we'll call the next item.
Approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Baldwin Paving Company, Inc. for the construction of a roundabout at the Hopewell Road, Cogburn Road, at Francis Road, Hopewell Road intersection. Agenda item number 13172. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Thank you. Okay, this is our first roundabout construction project. Tonight, we're asking for consideration of approval of a contract with Baldwin Paving Company. Again, this contract's in the amount of $786,606. This is for the construction of the roundabout at the Hopewell-Franceis-Cogburn intersection, roundabout that went through a very long public process, and we've been working on for quite a while. And as Chris mentioned earlier, weather-dependent, we'll be, we'd be ready to get under construction with this probably beginning of August if approved tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What's the timeframe on it, assuming the weather clears up?
We're looking at a nine to 12-month construction period.
Okay, and what was the price on that contract?
$786,606.
That's below our budget, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it is.
Good deal. All right, any other questions on that? Matt?
No, just for all the hours I've spent trying to get through that intersection, I would like to make a motion for the approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Baldwin Paving Company Incorporated for the construction of a roundabout at the Hopewell Road, Cogburn Road, at Francis Road, Hopewell Road intersection. Agenda item number 13-172.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval by Councilmember Coontz and a second by Councilmember Thurmond. The only discussion I'll say is, maybe if you can report back to us, Councilmember Coontz, all the additional time you're gonna be sitting there now during the construction of the road.
It'll be worth it when it's done.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
No way.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Does, do I have anybody on the council that would like to report on anything? Matt?
Just reminder for everybody that we are collecting books for the Friends of the Milton Library. They are, they are receiving them. Feel free to call me or anybody on the board if you're asking for where. But we're gonna have our first book sale, August 10th. It'll be the first ever Milton Library book sale, and we have well over 1,000 books to sell, so please come and bring it front.
Okay. All right, nothing else, I'll move on to your staff reports.
I'm good tonight. If, we have, Carter's got one, and then we'll go to executive session.
I just had a quick announcement that Wednesday night, we'll be holding our public information open house meeting on the concept plans for the Hopewell at the Bethany's intersection improvement. So that's gonna be 5 to 7 here in council chambers.
Okay. One thing, I'd like to just let you guys know or announce, and as you guys know, we talked about it, I guess it's been a little over a month when unfortunately, Matt Sincheck, which some of you guys may know or family, lost their son. I had told Miss Sincheck that we would do, I'd do whatever, and I'm sure the council would support anything to help out or in memory of their son Matt. So anyways, Harry's Farmers Market, Whole Foods, who Matt worked for, has agreed to donate a tree, and I've talked with our staff about planting that tree in Friendship Park. Our Artburst and Parks Director are gonna pick the appropriate spot and all that, so that it's not in a, you know, way of anything but, you know, good, good place. And all of a sudden, they're, they've actually scheduled that for, the Sincheck's for Thursday at 1:30. So if anybody, at least let you know if you can, can be there, that'd be great. That was a time that they came up with, with Whole Foods and their, their folks. But it's not a per se, you know, city function or anything like that, but certainly, just wanna let you guys know, and if anybody can, wants to be there, I'm sure they'd appreciate it. So if there's nothing else, we'll, by motion and, and vote, we added an executive session to discuss litigation and land acquisition. So I'll open up for a motion going to executive session.
I move that we turn into executive session.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to...
For the purpose.
Adjourn, ought to adjourn into executive session for land acquisition and litigation. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Any opposed? That's unanimous. That's unanimous.